I will turn to Terry Schleck for a roll call and recognition of visitors.
This evening's visitors include Matt Jensen, Zach Luca, Tim Ryan, and Ann Arnaud.
All right, thank you. This is our first petitions and communications section of the board agenda, and it's a time for members of the community to provide their comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to something less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak at either the first or second petitions and communications section, but not both. And prior to beginning comments, we'd ask that you state your name, address, city, and state. And do we have anyone who would like to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none, we will close this, close the petitions and communications section. We will have another one towards the end of the agenda for this evening. And that moves us to awards and recognition, and Dr. Grove.
Thank you, Chair Weiss. First of all, we'd like to recognize the student Maxwell Matite. Maxwell here tonight.
I think he's outside.
Oh, outside. Well, we want to bring him inside.[85.81][85.81][laughter] No. Oh, okay, he's coming. Mr. Maxwell Matite, and we want to recognize him tonight because he was awarded a Jack Kent Cooke Foundation's undergraduate transfer scholarship. And these scholarships honor academic excellence and need, and they help send 60 of the top students in the, community college students in the country to four-year colleges, top-level four-year colleges. He's going to be receiving up to $30,000 per year for three years in order to complete his bachelor's degree. Maxwell is only the second Johnson County Community College student to receive such an award. Thank you.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, before Maxwell leaves.
Please do.
Yeah, every once in a while, we have very special students who come across our college campus, and we have the chance to work with them and see them in action. And with Mr. Matite, he has shown his skill and his talent in our Model UN program and our honors program and student government, just in a host of things around our college campus. Several of you had the chance to meet Maxwell a couple of months back when he was recognized here at the board meeting as one of our All Kansas Academic Team members, one of two from our college that went on the All Kansas team. Maxwell is just one of those very, very special people who's made us a better college. And Maxwell, we're so lucky to have you on our campus, and we've been blessed to have you here for two years. And we know you'll go off and make so many of us very, very proud. We thank you for all you've done here, all your volunteerism, all the things that you've worked on, and certainly your hard work in the classroom and with Model UN and honors and all those other programs we mentioned. So, thank you so much for all that you've done, and congratulations.
Maxwell, where are you going to go?
American University.
Very good.
UC.
Very good. Next, recently, at a ceremony in New York City, Dr. Jay Antle accepted the Silver Edison Green Award for Johnson County Community College. The Edison Green Award recognizes institutions that are committed to sustainable solutions and green business models. And in particular, they look at institutions that are committed to reducing their carbon footprint and increasing green jobs and improving community health. Last year, as a matter of fact, the city of Greensburg, Kansas, excuse me, won the Gold Award. So, we're honored to follow in their footsteps. And in particular, our stormwater treatment project was noted, and Dr. Antle, of course, spearheaded that effort. So, congratulations and thank you.[296.83][296.83][applause]
By the way, that stormwater project won another award today.
And what award is that, Jay?
The Regional American Public Works Association Project of the Year Award in the Environment Less Than Climate category.
Cool. If I might just say, you know, Jay and his team have done a great job with working with the students related to the sustainability fee and the stormwater project and lightning. And after all said and done, this is not about awards. This is about making our campus a better place and our world a better place for those who are with us now and who, those who are going to follow us. And Jay, we thank you for all you've done. We have all kinds of neat projects I know that the students' group has, is working on this year, and with a lot of leadership from Jay, we know we're going to see a lot of good things coming down the pike. So, congratulations on all that you do.
Well, thanks to this board for supporting me.
Finally, we'd like to recognize Associate Professor of History, Dr. Jim Leiker. You'd approach the podium. As we know, Johnson County Community College is one of 19 community colleges in the nation that comprise the Board for the League for Innovation in Community Colleges. And every year, each one of those 19 community colleges are awarded an Innovation of the Year Award, which recognizes projects that have been innovative and have achieved a high level of success. And then they are published, and they serve as models for the other community colleges in the nation. Dr. Leiker championed and is now the director of the Kansas Studies Institute. And as far as we, it's a very rare, it's very rare that community colleges host regional institutes like this. And we can only find one other community college in the nation that has another regional institute. So, Dr. Leiker, thank you and congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, as you return to your seat, I'd just like to recognize Jim for one other project, although we could probably recognize him for dozens because he's one of those very special people who kind of steps out all the time and has great ideas. But Jim's also the person who kind of had the brainchild for our Faculty Scholars Program and has brought the best and brightest talent amongst our faculty. Those faculty do research around special projects and talents and then present those to our community and to our region. And Jim's done just a great job with that as well. And along with Jay, they've led the Kansas trip, and we've just had some wonderful, wonderfully rich and robust conversations and discussions as a result of the good work that Jim does. And we thank you very much for all that extra effort beyond the call of duty. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That concludes my report, Terry.
All right, thank you, Dr. Grove. Mr. Carter, do you have a college lobbyist report for us this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having me over this evening. Recently, my reports, the content and delivery were described as exciting as watching paint dry.[502.62][502.62][laughter] So, with that in mind, I've decided to shorten my report to seven pages.[507.22][507.22][laughter] And I pledge to you not to miss a beat reading it line by line. I do plan to touch on some of the highlights, though. Everything in the report is applicable to the college, some more than others. And so, I'll probably skip a few areas and allow you some evening reading time later on after the, after the meeting. But did want to just touch on the way the session left us at the end of the year, some of the major accomplishments that occurred, and sort of what we're anticipating as we move into the 2012 legislative session and the interim session that leads up to it. The 2011 session ended at about sunrise on Friday, the 13th. It seems only appropriate that it ended on that, on that morning.[552.82][552.82][laughter] The session was marked with a broken computer system that made it very difficult to follow what was going on. And for those that actually write the bills, you've heard me talk about it before, to actually produce the material that the legislature needs to conduct their business. Also marked with new rules, contentious debates, unscheduled meetings, and private agendas. I suppose that's, that's pretty common terminology when you're talking about legislative bodies. But it seems more so this year than ever before in what we witnessed in the way the two bodies worked together and in and amongst themselves. It certainly gave a new meaning to transparency at its best, as far as those that were involved in the process and sort of watching what was going on are concerned. Folks will be back on June 1st for the formal closure of the legislative session called Signee Die. At that time, should the governor have vetoed any particular item or bill, that is the legislature's last attempt to override such vetoes. I don't believe there's going to be anything, there may be one issue, and I'll talk about it a little bit later. I don't know if it'll garner enough votes, should there be a veto or not, to override the governor's decision-making power, but we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit later in the report. The session that was supposed to be all about the budget ended up really being 80 days of being in Topeka and about 10 days of getting down to brass tacks and getting the budget done. It makes it very frustrating for, for those of us that are trying to protect the interests that we represent, whether it's supporting a piece of legislation or trying to keep a piece of legislation away. The other thing that we saw this year, and it's very concerning to me as, as we move forward, was a new way of doing business. We always have a conference committee process that trues up the differences in a bill, if you will. This year, we saw more and more bills with different issues dumped into single conference committee reports. I don't recall the number, but simply because I don't track the committee a whole lot, but there was a judiciary bill that I believe had more than 13 bills placed in it. That becomes a nightmare, not only when you're trying to track the bills themselves, but for those that write the legislation, it's a, it's a recipe for disaster and mistakes all across the board. And we find ourselves revisiting those issues then year after year to clean up the messes and the mistakes that were made. The budget was indeed what, what this was all about. We knew going into the session that there was a $500 million shortfall. Out of the chutes, the House came out with a budget that would be in the neighborhood of an $80 million cut. So, essentially, they found $580 million within the existing resources to put a budget together that would not require a tax increase. That was not the final analysis, but when we started looking at the, at the ballgame at the beginning, that's, that's where we were at. The Senate was in a much different position. Some of their initial numbers were in the low two-digit numbers, in the 12 to 14 million dollar surplus range. The governor had indicated that he wanted a $7.5 million ending balance in his budget recommendations. In the final analysis, the magic number that really, and I talked about this during my last report, there was no get-out-of-town plan when folks went home in April. The magic number that became the get-out-of-town plan was $50 million. It's a rather arbitrary number. It's not tied to anything specific, but the House sort of stuck their feet in the sand and said, "We will settle for nothing less than $50 million of an ending balance, and that's what it takes to get out of town." It took us several days to, and several negotiation periods, and I think finally the governor started calling folks into his office to let them know, "Look, folks, we need to get our business done and get out of here on the 90th day." And that sort of became one of the, the closing points, was the $50 million ending balance. At one point, though, I think you should be aware, because these are things that we have to look forward to next year, there are some in the House that wanted to cut an additional $100 million out of the, out of the budget. And again, that's, that's a significant amount when, when you're talking about items that large, whether you spread it across state government or whether you were just to zero out a state university, for example, would be a good one that might receive that type of funding. We're billing this as a, the first time the budget has been cut in a number of years. That in effect is true. However, this year's budget spends about 6% more than, than last year's budget. It's a $14 billion all-funds budget, and we're still billing it as a, as a reduced services, a reduced budget. May and June revenue predictions are looking good at this point. Should we end up with extra dollars at the end of fiscal year 2011, that, that money will be added to the $50 million ending balance. That could cause some problems for legislators because there are serious discussions going on right now, and serious cuts were made, not only to K-12 schools, but, but across the board, when you're talking about closing an institution like the Kansas Neurological Institute, or when you're talking about not funding the market wage adjustment component for state employees that's, that's only worth about $7.5 million across the state. Those start presenting big problems to lawmakers when they, when they have to address the budget if there's a major surplus at the end. For higher education, the ultimate cut system-wide was about $11.1 million. A portion of that came from a floor amendment in the House that stuck during the conference committee process that, that tapped higher ed for about 8.7, 8.8 million. And then in the final hours of budget negotiation, there was another $2.4 million of State General Fund cut that will be spread across the system. So, I don't know that the board has determined how they're, they're planning on distributing those cuts, but my guess is it would be along the lines of the formula-driven process that, that would be equal based on the amount that each institution or each organization or each higher education level gets through the board process. Couple of good things to note, there is a $500,000 Economic Development Initiatives Fund grant, competitive grant process, that was scheduled to be administered through the Department of Commerce. That will be administered through the Board of Regents. It's a one-for-one matching grant program designed to produce programs that, that will produce jobs. I think we're in a good position to, to put together some grants that will bring some of those dollars to this campus. The other thing that I think is worth noting is the work that went into the post-secondary technical education authority, the committee work there, along with the approval of the Board of Regents and the look from the Legislative Educational Planning Committee. That bill was passed. There's no dollars with it, but the accounts have been created so that when the money is available, the tiered funding system will, will be put into place and will work just fine. Again, this has no, no direct applicability to our budget, but I think it's something you need to be aware of. One of the other cuts in the final analysis of the budget was to impose, I guess you could call it, it's not a cut necessarily, if it was out of my paycheck, I would call it that, will be that a 2.5% surcharge will be added to state employee health premiums for the 2012 planned year. And the overage of those proceeds will go to the State General Fund. So, they're not even necessarily going to pay for the, the health plan themselves. It's sort of a strange process, the way it's being, being built. So, I mentioned that just so that, so that you're aware of the type of things that we're doing in, in Topeka. The first time in a long time that K-12 education has been cut, the base state aid per pupil was cut around $232. That, that takes them back to an approximate 1996 level, is what some folks are saying in Topeka. That's a fairly significant cut, but, but that particular branch of government has not, not been hit as hard as, as some of the others. The good news, or the flip side of that, is, is the legislature also passed a bill that approves some flexibility in spending some of their, their dollars that they have in reserve that typically are not allowed to be spent for, for certain things. I'm going to, I'm going to skip over workers' compensation. That's one of those things that it's important for us to know what changes were made, because we have employees too, but I think we ought to focus on a few other things. I will touch briefly on the public employee retirement system. There were several meetings, little work produced with CAPERS changes. There will be an interim committee or a study group that meets over the course of the summer and fall, and they will produce a report that goes to the legislature on or before January 6th of next year. It would be my estimation that there will be some significant recommendations in, in that report that help direct the future of what CAPERS looks like. There are, there were some cap changes as far as employee and employer contributions, and I've included a web link to the conference committee report in your report if you'd like to go look at those. It's just too detailed to, to talk about and to put into a, a report of this nature. I do think, though, and those changes really don't go into effect until fiscal year 2013. So, we're talking yet another year away that gives us some time to, to plan. This is important, though. The Board of Trustees for CAPERS is waiting another month or two before they make some changes to their projections for what they believe their, the return on their investment will be. Currently, they have in their returns about an 8% number that is what they get back on their investments. If they lower that number, the $7.7 billion gap between the amount of money in there and the amount of money that needs to be paid out grows. So, that will, that will further cause problems for, for retirees and folks in the, in the public system. I shouldn't say it'll cause problems for retirees. It causes problems for those that are making the decisions of what needs to be done, because I believe earnestly that, that decisions will be made where those that are in the system through the year 2033, I think is right about where, where the, the program goes defunct, and those new employees, those new hires that'll probably come in under a new plan, they'll be taken care of. It's just going to be a very difficult process to, to get to that point. I'm not going to talk about the, the taxation and economic development incentives. However, they are important to us from the standpoint that they're all workforce-driven, workforce-related, and along with that comes training. And that's where we come into the picture, is there are significant dollars that, that will be made available through some of the economic development incentives that were part of the governor's plan. That is, if you will, part of his thumbprint on, on changing what, what economic development looks like moving forward. And I'll let you read those at your leisure. One quick thing before we, before we move on, there was a higher education catch-all conference committee report. Again, there were a number of bills that were dumped into that, one of which was Senate Bill 28. That's the J-CERT authority to keep the, the interest earnings locally. That, that, that did pass, that is law, and the amount for fiscal year 2012 is a little over $4,000. Another thing that I reported on last month that we need to keep our eyes on for next year is what we're terming a Tabor Light bill. And, and that is a look-back provision that caps state spending at the prior year's revenues, and any overage from, from the prior year is returned back through income tax and corporate tax windfalls, if you will. It would then further limit any, any future state spending without some type of significant action by the legislature. K-Tech has been rolled into Department of Commerce, as has Kansas-Sink, both economic development agencies that folks at our college work with on a number of levels. And, and the functions will continue to be there. It's just going to look a little different as, as they get their feet set in the ground once they move over to the Department of Commerce. Very quickly, a few other issues that are of importance. House Bill 2353 did not go anywhere, but that's the bill that would allow for concealed carry in public buildings if, if not appropriately x-rayed or, or metal detected. That, that bill will, will move up the priority list for next year. Did not see a lot of action. It came out later in the, in the session, but, but you can rest assured that there will be attempts to, to go after that next year, as will there be immigration issues. The in-state immigrant attempt to repeal the law that was passed in 2004 was halted in the Senate. However, I, I think that immigration issues will once again rise to the top next year. The, the other thing that, that is just of, of interest to note is with the emerging criminal investigation of the Kansas Bioscience Authority, late in the game, the governor made the recommendation that they move the bonding authority for NBAF and some of the other projects funded through the KBA over to the Department of Administration. It simply is a agency move. Nothing changes to the program as far as that's concerned, but again, it's one of those things that we sit in that corridor where, where we're going to benefit from, from some of the activities that occur. The final thing, then, is redistricting and reapportionment will become the, the topic of the summer. And with the mega wins by the very conservative members of the legislature, you can be certain that the districts, as they're redrawn this year, will, will have that component in place. The one final thing, then, and there may be a couple of final things, and I know, Dr. Calloway, you planned to talk a little bit about what occurred at, at the Board of Regents meeting yesterday, so I won't talk about the chair stepping down, and, and I don't know when you planned to talk on that, but I had that in my notes. The other, the other item is, as you know, Trustee Mitchellson, we work very closely with Linda Fund, and with the passing of her husband, it was his wishes and her intent to fill or run for and fill out his legislative seat, the 50th district that serves the north part of Topeka on up through Jackson County. That central committee election was held last night, and she lost by one vote. And a young man who has served in some staffer positions in the, the Senate will be serving his name as Trent Ledoux. He'll be serving in that capacity. He'll be sworn in probably on June 1st at Signee Die. So, I'll stop there and see if there's any questions. I did include a little chart at the back of your report that just sort of shows where the overall funding for higher education is and how that compares over the past several years.
Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Chairman Weiss. Maybe a question for Dr. Calloway. With the elimination of the Kansas Arts Council, this campus has been very involved with its commitment to art. Does the elimination of the Kansas Art Council affect our commitment in any way?
Great question. We, we are keeping our eye on that issue. We do think that they'll probably, because we have a great relationship with the commission, they've been a strong help to us as far as getting information out related to some of the projects and programs that we work on here at the campus. There clearly will be some impact. While we didn't, we didn't think it was appropriate for us to be involved from a lobbying perspective related to it, there'll be some impact clearly on us. It probably will mean some expansion of our marketing and, and information distribution, but there will be clearly some impact on us, yes.
Dick, your notes kind of imply that the Kansas Art Council is, still has a future of, in some shape, whether it's private funding or not. What are your thoughts about that?
Yeah, I think it's going to, if the governor makes the determination to line item veto, the amount, first of all, just very quickly, the legislature did not approve his executive reorganization order to do away with the Arts Commission. They overturned that. They also put the funding back in at the 2011 level for the, the Arts Commission, which is not quite $700,000. So, so those two items are, are in place and have passed. If the governor chooses not to fund at the $700,000 level, I think activities will cease for about a year, because the other action that also occurred was the Appropriations Committee zeroed out the 200-some thousand dollars that he had set aside for the nonprofit corporation to sort of get them started under the umbrella of the, of the History Museum, or the Kansas State Historical Society. There is not a provision in the budget for State Finance Council funding to, to come through. So, if he zeros out the $700,000, there is zero funding for, for one year. He sent a letter to the five employees of the Arts Commission before the session had concluded, relieving them of their duties, and, and those positions are, are not scheduled for, for the next fiscal year, so.
That's effective June 10th, I believe, is it not? The termination of those positions?
I don't recall the specifics on that, but that could be, that, that could be true. They're essentially on administrative leave.
And, and it is true the governor hasn't been able to line item out that.
That is, I believe, his intent.
His intent, right.
Trustee Mitchellson.
Senate Bill 143 and post-secondary tiered technical state aid and non-tiered, and I understand the money isn't there, but my memory's hazy on how much money we need to get to where we could actually implement this tiered system. Is it several hundred million?
I don't believe it's several hundred million. I believe that the, I want to say that the Technical Education Authority was going to ask for around 100 million.
58 million.
58 million. Is that the final number they decided on?
58 million. And, you know, the plan is that, in fact, we'll have some conversations at the COPS meeting yesterday. We had discussion about that, building that strategy at our retreat in June, and then how we might move forward with that. And we also discussed the need for a strategy with the expectation that it won't be fully funded of where we go from there, if in fact there's any funding at all. There are a couple of schools who think we should fund a tier at a time, and we've been pushing the issue, and of course, that's focused around where their programs fell, of course. Because we have programs across the board, and most colleges do, across each of the proposed tiers, it's our, our recommendation, and we're going to push it pretty hard, that if, if partial funding comes in, it should fund all tiers at a certain level.
All or none.
10%, 20%, whatever it might be. But, but we do have the funding minus what our reduction will be, which I'll get to in a second, through, our existing funding through the state. So, it's being redistributed into general education and into basically the post-secondary.
So, if the 58 million were to magically appear, we would be the beneficiary to the 2 and 7, or 2 and 1/2 million or so?
No, I think out of the 58, I think we were up for about 20% of that, so.
$10 million.
Right, it was 10 or 12 million dollars that would come to us. The major portion of that, thank you, come to us.
All right, does the board have any other questions? Trustee Stewart.
Yeah, under the budgetary items affecting higher education, the last bullets, the proposed 2 and 1/2% surcharge on state employee health premiums. You're just talking about, when you say the board, are you referring, is it the Board of Regents Office?
It's all state employees. So, it will be state university employees as well as the board office. It does not apply to us. I just wanted to mention it.
But it's all state employees. It's 2 and 1/2% of their health premium.
That's correct.
And that's just going to go back into State General Fund. Yeah, I didn't understand the way it was written. I thought it was just affecting a few, but it's all.
All right, anything else for Mr. Carter?
If not, maybe I could just fill in a couple of the.
Sure.
Items that Mr. Carter mentioned. One is, we have received notice from the state, in fact, we're. One is, we have received notice from the state, in fact, we received it day before yesterday, that we, it appears that we'll be looking at a 1.193% cut, which should be somewhere in the ballpark of about $300,000 for us coming from the state. Conversations with Don Perkins, we have the capacity to absorb that within our current existing budget without having to go back in and making adjustments, so we were expecting that we would see some kind of a cut from the state. So we have the flexibility within our existing budget, actually, it's probably a little less than we thought we would get. So we have the capacity to deal with that $300,000 or so reduction that we'll be getting from the state. So we do have that in hand, and we have an expectation that that will go through once the full action is taken by the legislature. So we think that that's probably what we should expect to see. As Dick mentioned, there could be some other changes, but we don't expect that that will happen. Also, as mentioned, and you saw in my email this morning related to resignation of Region Chair Gary Shear from Overland Park, he did resign yesterday, literally in the middle of the meeting, and it was a very emotional but also very poignant kind of time discussion. Without going too deep in all the details, and I think he would want us not to do that, there were clearly some disagreements between he and other members of the Regents'. He had one more meeting to go, and so I plan to send a note to him, and if you'd like, I could send it on behalf of the board thanking him for his service. He was a huge supporter and proponent of our college and community, and person who's done an awful lot of work for and good for us, so if the board's of the mind, I certainly would like to do that on your behalf as well. And, yeah, it was a pretty dramatic moment. He came in and started the meeting, went through the minutes, and then basically thanked everyone for the good work, and talked about how much he enjoyed working with students, and then handed the gavel to the vice chair, who had no clue that he was resigned or had resigned already, and the president of the Regents', Andy Tompkins, didn't have a clue either. So, I mean, he literally got up, took his briefcase, and walked out. So, yeah, very difficult time, so. If that's comfortable for you, I'll probably send a note on behalf of the board and the college and thank him for his good work. And, yeah, certainly a lifetime of commitment to our state, and he's been a great friend of our college.
All right, thank you. Anything else before we move on? All right, Trustee Drummond, that brings us to the management report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sure it's not gonna be as exciting or as informative as the information we just read from our lobbies and our president, but I'll move on with it. If you would turn behind tab two, there are pages 1 through 22, you'll find minutes from last time of the materials. And you're gonna turn to the recommendations, which are found on pages six through 14, and I will go through these as quickly as I can. I've been told by my colleagues that gravity is very important, so I'll try to live up to that. First recommendation pertains to an extension of a lease we have with King Cove's place. It's a lease that we've had for some time. It's a renewal and extension of this lease. You've seen the material there. Just one highlight, and that is they've agreed to an allowance of up to $20,000 for additional security equipment to make our facility as secure as possible there. As you see, its renewal term will be $13.25 per square foot. We think that's an excellent price with this market, trying to take advantage of the market as much as we can. Programs that are there now will move out to the Latha Health Education Center, and programs from Bishop Miege will relocate to this facility. So that's sequence events that'll be taking place, and we'll touch on some other pieces of that in a later recommendation. So it's a recommendation the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to renew the King Cove's lease agreement at $13.25 per square foot based on 9393 square feet for a total of $124,457.25 per year for the duration of the lease, and I would so move that, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. How long are we obligated to stay at King's Cove?
I think this takes the lease another two years.
Two years.
March 31st, 2013.
Okay. And we're gonna incorporate what's now out of Bishop Miege, that's sort of Northeast Johnson County over to I-35 and 75th. And that's sort of, is that anticipated to be an interim solution?
Very much an interim solution.
It's two years.
Right. And in my monthly report, unless you'd like, I could chat about that now, but we do believe that, as good as the folks at King's Cove have been, that's probably not a permanent solution, that portion of the county. We did see in the papers this week that Tom Valente and the Gateway Project have been postponed again. Tom's missed the deadline that Joe Sobchak and I met with him, Dr. Grove, met with him a couple of months back, and asked him to meet some needs for us related to what we needed if we were going to look at Gateway as being a viable and realistic option for us related to serving students in that portion of the county. That timeline that we agreed he would respond to us in, went flying past with no response. So it's kind of our sense that that project is a dead project. And so Dr. Grove and I have chatted this week, and we're going to start to explore some other options that look very, very appealing to us in that part of the county, which we think will give us more visibility and more opportunity. And we're also talking about the potential, actually, of looking at some partners who might also want to look at that type of an arrangement. So I think, quite frankly, we've given Tom every opportunity and the Gateway Project every opportunity to be a go. It's clear that we're not a high priority, and so we just think it's time for us to move on. I've had conversation with Mark this week as well, as far as what our next steps might be related to that. You know, we don't wanna, you know, use good man money chasing after bad money, but, you know, there are some damages that we experienced as a result of their bad faith efforts when they closed us down with no notice, basically. And so we intend to pursue that pretty aggressively. The folks at Bishop Miege were tremendous, you know, in working with, but the reality of life was that just was a bad location for the institution. And I know there was a lot of conversation prior to my arrival related to that, and I think the predictability of that was right on target. And so we really do need to take a look at what our best options are, and I know a couple of you might be interested in kind of joining us on some touring, and so when Dr. Grove will be gone for a little bit of time through the remainder of the month, and when he's back, you know, we'll be starting to arrange some conversation about where we go next. But it's just time for us to start to accept the reality of, I think we all knew, which is that just really is a project that's probably not gonna happen in anywhere in the near future, so. And certainly not in a mindset where we'd be considered a prime client, so.
As a resident of Northeast Johnson County, I really hope we have a highly visible location someday, and the hope for the, what they were calling the Gateway Center would have been that, had we been able to come back to where the old Mission Mall was. And despite the deep disagreement between me and trustee Stewart, I'm not gonna pick up my briefcase. Next to last meeting, I'm gonna stay and continue to talk about this. I'm disappointed we have to go out to I-35 and 75th to try to take care of students in the northeast or those who live up there, but at least we've got someplace for them to go in the interim. And I hope, I will continue to urge as a private citizen that we find a place in Northeast Johnson County where we have visibility.
Right.
And where students can find us and adults can come for all the education courses we offer. We're just underserved in that geographic area.
Well, we clearly are, you know. Six years ago, we were at 2,000 students at that Mission Mall site. We're now down to 400 in that general area. I mean, we're just not coming close to serving students the way we would or should or could. And the damages that came as a result of the bad faith efforts, I think, are things that we really need to discuss. But I also think there's some great opportunities in that area. And so we've explored some possibilities. It's time now, I think, for us just to say, you know, we've given them every opportunity to try and make the Gateway thing go, and it just doesn't seem like, A, we're a priority, and B, you know, I don't know that it'll happen in the first place. So I think we've gotta just move forward and accept the fact that, you know, we gave it our best shot, try and make that one work, and just, if we had more control of the situation, we'd have a better solution, but in the case of this Gateway Project, it's just not gonna happen.
Well, one more question. Does he have fee tied into that property, do we believe, or does he just have an option? Does anybody really know?
I don't, Mark, do we know?
I don't think we know.
I don't know that we know. It's very difficult to get a real straight answer, and quite honestly, promises that are made are fairly regularly and just not kept, so I'm not sure if we even heard whether we'd know what the facts were, so. But I think it's time for us to move forward, and so that would be our plan.
All right, speaking of moving forward, we have a motion and a second on the floor, in case anyone has forgotten. If we have no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Trustee Drummond, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Second bid pertains to the Billington Library renovation. I just might highlight that in this bid, you'll find a renovation space between rooms 232 and 234 of the Carlson Center, which would allow for the storage of fashion, merchandising, design, program collection that has been at Bishop Miege, so we need to remodel that so we can bring that, those clothes back over to campus. With all of that, I would recommend the management committee, the Board of Trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $276,300 for Miller Building Services Incorporated, plus an additional $13,700 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs. The total expenditure not to exceed $290,000 for the Billington Library renovation. This particular company is kind of new to us. We've done our due diligence in checking references and making sure that everything would be up to snuff with them, and we're comfortable that with their bid, which is much lower than the others, that this would be the right company for us to go with. So with all that being said, it would be my recommendation, Mr. Chairman, to accept this statement.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the third bid is the annual contract for beverages. This is an arrangement that'll allow for us to have more efficiencies in our dining services area. This is really the first time we've done a beverage exclusive, which allows us some efficiencies that we haven't had in the past. There are five firms that bid for this. We ended up with one firm, of course. With that, allowing me to recommend the management committee's suggestion that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the establishment of an annual contract for beverages with Pepsi Beverages Company at the annual expenditure not to exceed $200,000, and I would so move that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I did ask the question, are there Coke products available on campus? And I was told you could buy them in the bookstore, is that right?
Convenience store.
Convenience store. So I'll go along with it since you can still have a question.
It's good news for us Coke drinkers. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the fourth bid is annual contract for printing of continued education schedules. We have significantly reduced the number of schedules we print, and I suspect we'll continue moving in that direction, but we're still gonna have to print $100,000-plus of those. It's a recommendation the management committee, the Board of Trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $127,376.64 from the O'Donnell Publishing Company, plus an additional $12,750 to allow for printing overruns, for total expenditure not to exceed $140,126.64 for an annual price contract for the printing of the continued education schedules, and I would so move that, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Chairman Weiss. I'm assuming that the overrun fee was not included on any of the other bids, or did any of the other bids include an overrun amount?
Trustee, they are not included.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, fifth bid is for VM software maintenance bid. This purchase includes new software maintenance as well as maintenance on existing software for a period from May 20th to 2011 through August 31st, 2012. It supports our existing license on a virtual server, and there were several vendors who were involved in this, and it's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the bid of $13,002.90 from Endpoint Technologies for the purchase of VMware software and maintenance. And I would so move that, Mr. Chair.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Moving to the sixth bid, it's furniture for our Old Health Education Center. We had several entities bid on this, and we decided the best bid for us was the one we ended up with here. It's our recommendation of the management committee, the Board of Trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $77,737.2 from BA Designs LLC for the purchase of furniture for the Latha Health Education Center, and I would so move that, Mr. Chair.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I do have one question on this. Does this furniture have ratings that helps us towards the lead rating on this building?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And I have a question. This was a process, this was a rebid. We had one vendor that was not happy with the process of the original bid, and so we took the step and went and rebid this, and that vendor chose not to submit a bid, is that correct?
That's correct.
If I might also, I'm not sure if, I think it's appropriate to maybe indicate, maybe as a follow-up to the last two questions, we do have one vendor from Latha who has not been happy with our process. We've tried to make sure that this process is fair and equitable and equal to everyone, providing everyone the opportunity to provide us good input and the like. This is the vendor that I'm speaking of also made calls to our colleagues at Latha Medical Center to try and have them influence us, and as far as where we go, I just find that to be deplorable kind of behavior. I know he's suggested, there's been some suggestion that the process wasn't fair or maybe even rigged, which I take real offense to. But I do think that if there are any issues or questions, we do need to have that individual provide any information to us so that we can carry that forward. And the reason I mention it here in the open board meeting is I think it's important for our community to know that when we do have questions and issues, we'll deal with them very, very directly. And I think the, working with Mitch's team, and they work diligently to make sure that all of our bid processes are fair and open and accept all kinds of feedback and input. I know in this case, we've had individuals called several of you, but when you start to reach out to our partners and to say, you know, we don't like what they're doing, and can you influence that, that's really wrong. And just want to make sure that that's open there as well to this whole process. I do think that, you know, Mitch's group has done an outstanding job of making sure the process is fair and explain to this vendor why maybe they're, you know, they were not selected as the low bid in the past. So I know we are looking at some issues related to the lead certifications, and we've given them every opportunity to resubmit, and they did not, as I understand. Is that true, Mitch? So.
And I've met with the individuals you referred to, and we'll set up another meeting to further go through this with them, with Mitch and Joe and myself in the near future.
Right. But I think, you know, the more we can do those kinds of things, I think it helps them understand the process, but also we really, if there's any evidence of there being a problem, then they need to let us know that. And if there's not, I think we have to accept that, because we will turn it over to campus police and let them conduct an investigation if there's some kind of inappropriate behavior going on. Those of us who know Mitch and his team know that that's just the ludicrous, but we always want to make sure that we do our due diligence, too. And so we will make sure that, you know, we protect all of our taxpayers. This is one that I think we need to really take a hard look at, but quite frankly, I think the, you know, reaching out to, you know, our colleagues at Latha Med Center to try and get them to put pressure on us was just really inappropriate, so. Just a personal comment, I just find that to be despicable behavior on part of a vendor.
And I have a lot of confidence in Mitch Porters and his process, that he's doing what's best for the college and the taxpayers, and there is some thought that, some that maybe we should always buy local regardless of the price. I still think we have a duty to make sure we're being very efficient with the tax dollars, and all things being equal, I'd love to do business local, but if that's not the case, then we need to do what's the lowest price and with the same quality, so.
One of the things that Mitch has done to trustee Stewart's point is work very, very hard with local vendors, bringing them in and discussing with them how they can be more involved with the institution, be better connected. And I think that that's, Mitch should be commended for that kind of work and behavior. We really do want to do work locally and as much as we can. We really do want to do work locally and as much as we can, provide as much business locally. And we are supported by our businesses and our taxpayers, and we should do that. But at the same time, we also have a responsibility to have the best cost, too. And so, I appreciate trustee Drummond really going way beyond the call of duty this month and that kind of support. We really do appreciate it. And I know that, you know, future conversations with the vendor may help. So, we really appreciate your extra efforts in that regard, and we'll continue to provide the best information we can. But I felt it was important for the board to be aware that we do have the one vendor who, and you probably all are aware, that we do have one who's, who's not happy with us. But Mitch's team has done, has really done a good job of making sure that this is a fair and equitable process.
I would just echo what the president said. I met with Mitch's team before a board meeting, and we went through the process yet one more time, and I brought some questions up. They were answered beautifully. I think we have a very fair process. It's very equitable. It's very open, and I think we can always improve everything we do, but we're, we're doing pretty doggone well. So, I'm very comfortable about that, and we'll just continue moving in that direction.
All right, Dr. Callaway and the board members, I appreciate your comments on this subject. It's an important one and should not be treated lightly. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, the bid we're looking for, which is the last one, O'Leith Health Education Center medical equipment and supplies. There were several different items here listed, and we had a chance to read through those. So, it's a recommendation of the management committee, the Board of Trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the lowest acceptable bids, $24,233.35 from Direct Supply Incorporated, $1,204.14 from Medline Industries, and $584.88 from Elsa Co. Incorporated, and $8,359.85 from Prime Source Services, and $25,496.96 from Products Unlimited for a total expenditure of $59,783.18 for the purchase of medical equipment and supplies for the O'Leith Health Education Center. And I would so move that, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Dr. Callaway, can you refresh our collective memories on when do we expect the O'Leith Health Education Center to become operational?
Our plan would be that we'll, our doors will be open in full service for the fall term, although we will be receiving the keys for that building sometime in mid to late June. We are starting to, you know, the terrazzo floors, flooring's complete, the, for the most part, the building is, you know, we're kind of just almost getting down to punch list items. We'll be, we'll be starting to ship, I believe, Mitch, some of the equipment that the board's approved in the last couple of meetings. And in fact, I think some of the technologies are already starting to arrive and be loaded towards some of the classrooms. So, it'll take us about a month to get all of that, you know, fully up and in the right places and functioning. We'll probably be open for business closer to mid-July, first of August, but first of the semester will be full, in full swing.
Very good. Thank you.
Very much. I would just highlight, Mr. Chairman, and board on pages 16 and 17, the capital acquisition improvements. And we reviewed all the projects, projects as we always do, and they all appear to be on schedule and on budget. Page 18 through 20, network infrastructure and equipment services, a report prepared by our CIO Denise Moore. You'll find that we're making great progress in our infrastructure, not other technology challenges, and we're moving along very, very well. So, with that, I would close the report.
All right, thank you. Trustee Sharp, learning quality report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee met on Monday, May 2nd, and had a couple of presentations. The first was from Shannon Ford, the Director of Academic Technology Services on the Turning Point Technologies Student Response System. And if you've ever, I don't know if any of the trustees have seen this system live, but it's pretty cool. It's, if you want to talk about meeting students where they are technologically, it's a, it's a great way to increase student involvement in a class, really keep their attention. And what I thought was cool about it was all of the, all the people in the committee were passed out a clicker. It's a little, looks like a calculator. And there were a series of questions put up on the, the display board, general history, history questions, and you had to answer them. And you could, they would give you a certain amount of time to answer the question, and then they would log, you know, who got it right and who, well, not who, but how many people got it right, how many people got it wrong. The time that it took you to answer the question, so you had a live running total of, clicker number one got 90 percent, clicker number two got 10 percent. You could, it was a really interesting way to, to gauge student understanding of coursework. I think it would be a fun way to start pretty much each class, almost like a pop quiz, but in a fun way and an almost anonymous way. I think you could probably reveal who had which clickers, but you didn't have to. So, it was interesting to see what technology is out there to enhance student, student learning. We also talked about the solar technologies program, which is just being launched, and course delations for automotive technology. You'll see the solar technologies coursework under tab 10. We also talked about, had a significant conversation about our cooperative agreements with Metropolitan Community College, mostly in the area of allied health and how we share those resources, the cost of allied health classrooms, supplies, all of that sort of thing, helps us when we work with other, other community colleges, other neighboring schools, to save on some of that money. Those courses are under tabs six and seven. We had a quick conversation about a new professor emeritus, designee, Dr. Burgess Birch in Engineering Technology, who is retiring. And Dr. Grove updated us on the tobacco-free policy, which is in effect on August 1st. And I know that many of you received an email from Mindy Maines, in the, who's an administrative assistant that does a lot of interviewing with students and their perspectives on the college. She wrote us a really nice email that basically said that she talks to a lot of students about what they like, what they don't like about the college, and most students don't have anything to say. Everything's kind of okay. They don't really have a lot of comment. But two in the last month, two students in the last month were grateful that this, this campus would soon be smoke-free, that they don't like having to leave a building and being inundated by, by smoke, which you're not supposed to be when you leave a building anyway. But designated areas, it's hard to walk by those areas. So, I think, I thought that was nice and just an anecdotal support for that policy. The next meeting will be on Monday, June 6th, in 270. So, if you have any, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Nobody said anything about marking?
No. Well, in those interviews, she didn't specifically mention that, but...
Good news.
All right, thank you, trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I will cover very briefly the audit report and then end up with the recommendation for renewal of financial audit services. The audit committee met on May 9th, and some of the things that were considered and discussed were public safety training center outside instructor practices. I won't go into details of these. You can read these in your board packets. A lengthy discussion of bookstore cash control processes, which the committee benefits, I think, very greatly from trustee Stewart's experience in the banking world in that regard. The college is seeking to adopt an IRS 127 plan, which will allow the, the college tuition assistance program for graduate-level classes to be offered to full-time regular staff on a tax-exempt basis, which I think is a terrific thing for us to do. Some, some other discussions regarding information security, emergency preparedness, and so on. I do want to draw your attention to the end of the report of the ethics report line update. Between January 29 and May 5, 13 reports were received via the ethics report line. In three of those cases, the reporter wished to remain anonymous. All but one of the cases were received via the internet. Seven cases were entered by a college staff member on behalf of another individual. And of the 13 issues reported as of May 5, nine were reviewed and appropriately addressed. Four cases are currently in process due to related cases. It actually consists of three separate issues. And of all the cases previously reported as being in progress, those have all been addressed. And again, I do want to emphasize that this is a part of the audit committee that trustee Stewart and I take very, very seriously and encourage anyone that has an issue with the, with the college that they believe needs to be addressed, if it's appropriate, to use the ethics report line update. And I'd like to finish my report with a recommendation. It is the recommendation of the audit committee that the Board of Trustees accept the college administration's recommendation to renew the contract for annual financial audit services for the college's fiscal year ending June 30th, 2011, with McCrady Pullen, LLP, at an amount not to exceed $88,305. And so, I'll make that motion.
A second.
All right, any discussion on this item? Trustee Cook.
Thank you, Chairman Weiss. How often do we review the bid process for these services?
Every five years.
Yeah, this, what, what year are we in now?
Fourth.
This is the fourth of the five-year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and that's it.
Chairman, may I make a comment about the ethics report line?
Yes.
I just want to congratulate you and trustee Stewart, and I'm so pleased that we have an anonymous reporting system that we're all very serious about, and there is an opportunity for anybody on campus who has a complaint to make that complaint known and let it come through to the audit committee the way it does. So, thank you for your work on that. I think this college is light years ahead of where we were five years ago when we didn't have that. I appreciate everybody's work.
If I might, maybe just to trustee Michelson's comments related to the, to that. In the report, you did speak to the issue of seven of the cases were entered by staff members. Oftentimes, that happens. In fact, I'd say generally, those reports happen when, when we receive a report, it could be through to my office, it could be to HR, it could be to the, to the auditing office at Janelle, in Janelle's area where a complaint or a concern comes in. And when we become aware of it, it's one that we believe needs to go to ethics point. So, even if the individual chooses not to report it in that way, we still put it into the, into the ethics line reports so that, in fact, you know, we continue to use that process, and we actually report it in there for them. So, we try and encourage everyone to go that route, but oftentimes, when we, when you'll hear that those, that cases were entered by an employee on behalf of someone, it generally is happening that way. And we, we think it's really important institutionally, continue to support that. Sometimes we have issues that don't seem to belong there, but for the most part, those issues do really come through and get, clearly, all of them get the scrutiny they deserve. But if they don't belong there, we can find the right pathway for them. And sometimes, if they're not in there, we get them in there for them.
And then I'd like to commend our, our, Janelle Vogler. She does an excellent job of, of being very persistent on these and communicating with trustees, Don and myself, keeping us in the loop and then asking for our input until these are resolved. And they're not always resolved satisfactorily to the person that, that submitted them, but we always resolve, we always respond back with what we think is the appropriate response. But I think Janelle does an outstanding job in communication process with us and I think with them, the reporters. So, thank you, Janelle.
All right. That moves us to the human resources committee report, and Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Chairman Weiss. The committee did not have its meeting in May. We have no report.
Thank you. Anybody else like to give a report like that? Thank you. All right, then, in that case, that moves us to the president's recommendations for action, and we will begin with the treasurer's report. Dr. Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you would turn to behind tab 5 on page 29 through 40, you'll find the treasurer's Just to highlight a couple of things, probably the most exciting about a treasurer's report is that we received some money. And received $1,336,857 from tax paid from the county during the month of March. We also, you might see as you look through that, we've made some payments on some bonds. We made 13 of 19 payments, semi-annual payments, Series 204 certificates of participation. That covers the Briner Center and Nerman Museum. We also made payment three of 20 semi-annual payments on Series 2009 certificates of participation, which funded the construction of O'Leith Health Education Center. I think that's kind of exciting. We've made three payments, haven't moved in yet. That's a good start. You'll also see on page 40, the fund balances, and between all of us here, we're glad to answer any questions you might have. And with all this, I'm pleased to say to you that we are very, very good standing financially, continue to do very well, continue to track very well. And with that, it's a recommendation of the college administration and myself that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month of March 2011, subject to audit.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Chairman Weiss.
Yes.
There's two items. On page 31, under the Adult Supplemental Education Fund on tuition and fees, I realize it's through March, but we're at 44.8 percent. Do we, do we have a forecast of where we think that will end up in terms of revenue?
I will turn to one of my colleagues. I didn't know the answer to that.
We're, we're down about half, so I'm just wondering what our forecast may be. Obviously, we haven't received the tuition we had anticipated.
I can speak to that. I think we are, I think what you see before you is, is at the end of March.
Right.
It's probably 75 percent of what we expected to see.
Okay, cool. Thank you. And then on page 40, trustee Drummond, under the outstanding commitments, we list about 22 million, if I read that properly. What's the timeline of those commitments? Is that by end of fiscal year? Or are those commitments, I guess, just what's the ending, ending date of those commitments?
I think Bob can help us with that.
Well, if, if any of those commitments are still open in June 30th, they'll roll forward to the next two years, still encumbering the funds. They won't all be liquidated by June 30th.
Would you say, Bob, that most of them would be, though?
Well, most of them, but not all.
Some will carry over.
And the reason they would, wouldn't be completed would be because of contractual completion of certain projects? Is that, or...
Well, like, like the O'Leith Center is one of those commitments, and I'm sure we'll still owe money to JD Dunn in the contract.
Thank you very much.
It appears there's no other discussion. All those in favor of accepting the treasurer's report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And that moves us to Dr. Callaway and your portion of the president's recommendation for action.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On, under tabs six and seven, you'll see this month, the college's proposal that the board consider, A, a new cooperative agreement with our colleagues with Metropolitan Community College. As you know, we've had a relationship with Metropolitan for a number of years where our students are able to start programs with us and then complete their degree programs in select areas at Metropolitan Community College and pay our tuition and fee rate, not pay out of, out of state rates. Conversely, there are students who start at Metropolitan Community College and finish here in some select programs. The whole dynamic behind that is because of the proximity of our campuses. By the way, we have similar agreements with Kansas City Kansas Community College. The rationale behind that is where there's the need in the community for only one program, rather than having us competing with each other, we, we try to work collaboratively related to curriculum and student, support students and the like, and also support students receiving their education within their local fee structure. So, we have one program that we, we propose to the board that we add for the upcoming year. It's a surgical technology program that's been added at Metropolitan Community College. Students would start with us and take some of the preliminary courses as listed in, in your packet, and then would finish up at Penn Valley in surgical technology. And, and then, under, that's under tab six. Under tab seven would be the renewal of the collaborative agreements between our college and Metropolitan. You'll see those programs range from biotechnology to interior... You'll see those programs range from biotechnology to interior merchandising, polysenography, respiratory care, and the like, programs that work with us, and then certainly our programs where we send students there. We could handle all of this, if you'd like, in one motion, both the new and the renewed collaborative agreements, or if you'd like, we could handle those separately. But it would be my recommendation that, on behalf of the administration, that we do approve and accept these cooperative agreements between Johnson County Community College and Metropolitan Community College District.
Does anybody object to handling them one?
A second, a second to motion.
Well, I think it's got to be made first.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right.
We're doing that as though they're all approved at any time.
And these cooperative agreements would run July one, 2011 through June 30th, 2012.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Please continue.
Thank you. Under tab eight, this evening, you'll see clinical affiliate agreements that we're asking the board to consider this evening. And we do have one clinical affiliate agreements with Letha Medical Services for a phlebotomy program. It's the, and this is a program that's run through our workforce and continuing education area. It's a recommendation of the College Administration that the trustees authorized the college to enter into an agreement with Letha Medical Services, Inc., for clinical experiences in phlebotomy for the period of May 19, 2011 through June 30, 2012.
All right. Anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right.
A second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
You know, one of the great things about being a trustee is you get to learn lots of things. And two years ago, I didn't know what phlebotomy was. But I still remember now.
So, for the benefit of our viewers at home.
Taking a blood.
Can you spell it?
I'd have to cheat on that one.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I've completely forgot where we're at. We're under tab nine. Thank you. Under tab nine, you'll find the 2011-2012 Management Budget Proposal. And as you'll remember, in April, we had our budget workshop where Don Perkins and the administration proposed a budget for next year. It is our recommendation that the board consider our budget, so with a mill levy that reflects a flat millage of eight point seven nine nine, which would be the same as the prior year. I would just note that this is the fifth year in a row where we've either been flat or down in our proposed budget for the community. We deeply appreciate the cost that our community members pay as taxpayers to our college, and we think particularly in this economic time, it's important to be good citizens and stewards of the public fund. And so, I'm proud to be, on behalf of the administration and the institution, recommending that we maintain our mill levy at the same level for next year. Just a couple of other highlights that I would share with you. We do, at this time, not believe that you'll see any new full-time positions for next year. We're going to continue to operate within the structure that we brought forward last month. And while we may be moving some positions around, the total number will not increase. As you also know, we've been working towards a reduction in the administrative staffing and personnel. We've not reduced the number of faculty positions at the institution. In fact, we've worked hard to commit to increasing numbers of faculty as a group in support of where we go. But it would be all within the total number of positions that the board has approved through your staffing table. Through our budget process, we've worked through a mechanism that we call the PBS model, which is prioritizing our budget strategically and connecting our budget to the strategic plan for the college and the institutions, basically putting our money towards the things that we say are important to us. And Don and Perkins and Joe Sobchak and all the team in the finance area has really done a tremendous job of helping work through that strategy. And then the Cabinet and all the members of the leadership team have helped us do that prioritization, and we believe that we have a budget that we can work with. You'll note also, at the bottom of page forty-seven, we are predicting at this stage an assessed valuation to decline by one point two five, which is down from the three percent originally we proposed or projected. We do expect that student credit hours will increase about two percent, and we're going to keep our eye very closely on that. Our early numbers are a little below that two percent number, so we're keeping our eyes out of what, on what happens with that, with that figure. With all that in mind, I'd certainly be open for any questions, if you might have any, but it is the recommendation of the College Administration, the Board of Trustees approve the 2011-12 Management Budget, as has been presented to the board in our workshop and the document before you this evening. It would be subject to adjustments required when the final beginning balance and assessed valuation amounts have been determined and finalized by the assessor. We do expect that there tends to be a very, very minor decimal point up and down, but our proposal is that we maintain that mill levy as it stands, and that would be the recommendation that we present to you this evening.
Second. All right. We need a motion first.
I'll make the motion.
I can't make it.
I'll make the motion.
We have both a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question. Roughly, Don Perkins, remind me what one point seven five times the assessed valuation represents in dollars to us in terms of revenue? If we're reducing the amount of decrease by, from three percent to one point two five, there's a one point seven five difference there, what does that amount?
As far as the reduction of, with the assessed valuation decrease and the impact on the budget, for every percent, it's about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I, so it's about a million dollars that we're talking about here. So, we think we're going to get a million dollars more than we originally thought we were going to get.
Right. And we've been tracking very closely. The original projection of three percent actually started at four percent, and those numbers came directly from the county assessor as we were working through the process, starting in November, and as the numbers started to come in, looked better than we all projected. The final numbers that we received in preparation for our April meeting called for and showed and determined that, in fact, assessed value was up a very, very small amount, less than one percent. But with the appeals process, the expectation would be that there would be some appeals that would be accepted, and so the assessed value, while preliminarily is ahead, probably will be behind. To be conservative, we've projected one point two five, which is consistent with what the county's projecting for their budget countywide for assessed value. So, we think that that's a pretty good projection, and it still gives us a conservative approach to where we're going. Paul Welkum's suggestion was that probably the appeals would take us to somewhere near flat, but we wanted to have a little bit of a buffer, hence the one point two five. And just for comparison purposes, the county's actually using one point two nine, and we think that one two five is pretty reasonable. And we've asked him, is this a good, strong projection, but also on the conservative side? And his answer was yes. Thank you.
Trustee Rill?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, this board made a commitment of sorts to the taxpayers to make every attempt to hold the mill levy steady during this economic time, and we challenged the administration of the college to formulate a budget that was going to be relying on a decrease in assessed evaluation revenues, and the administration met that challenge in an exemplary fashion, and certainly to be commended for meeting that challenge. And I just want to point out that while the mill levy remains steady, there's actually a tax decrease to the taxpayers of something over one percent. And so, congratulations to the administration for being able to follow through on our challenge and, you know, moving forward. I just think it's important to remember that the mill levies remain steady, taxes have gone down, and we still have one of the best colleges in the country, so, well done.
Trustee Cook.
Chairman Weiss, thank you. I would echo that, Trustee Rill. It's a very remarkable process that the whole team has been through. Question for Don. I know that we're projecting the delinquency rate for the next five years to be three percent, and I don't recall in our board retreat what the historical have, have we been at about three percent for the past few years of delinquency tax rate?
We have experienced probably a little less than three percent.
We used to be at four percent, and we lowered that to three percent a couple, three years ago, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Under tab ten, you'll find my monthly report this evening. I know you've had a chance to read through that in detail, so I won't go through each and every item with that, but I just would point out one or two highlights. You had the opportunity this evening to meet Maxwell Matite, and Maxwell was our All-Kansas, All-American, and also received the Jack Hancock Scholarship, which is for, scholarship that will provide him with thirty thousand dollars a year as he works on his upper division courses at American University. We're very proud of him. Remind you that tomorrow evening is our graduation, although this whole week has been a graduation exercise for us, it seems. We graduated our GED program on Tuesday night. The keynote speaker was Dr. Grove. He also received an award, one of only four recipients in twenty-six years of award in support of the program, very, very well deserved. Those of you who know Dr. Grove know his commitment to the GED program, and we congratulate him, and he did a great job in his keynote speech. Last evening, we had graduation for two programs, our nursing program and respiratory therapy. Had a chance to stop in both, and we did have just a great experience in both of those events last evening, and congratulate the faculty in those programs and all the students who will be finishing up this evening. We have three graduations, and while time will not allow us to do all of those, we congratulate all the students in the programs all throughout this week as they complete their exercise. Tomorrow, we do have our college-wide graduation, be held in the Field House, starting at seven thirty. We're looking for the board to hopefully be here by about, Terry, we said what, six, six or so. We'll have an opportunity to kind of get all set up and maybe some photos taken before we move into that graduation exercise. Our graduation speaker this year is Senator Jerry Moran, who'll bring some, I think, great messages to our students and will be highlighting in some of our students. And he's done an amazing job of researching the institution, some of our students. We look forward to that graduation experience. I did mention the state cut that we're looking to see be finalized somewhere in the next several days, and we do, working with Tom, I'm sorry, with Don, we do have a way and a strategy to deal with that without having to go back into the budget and make more cuts, as you're aware, and thank the board for their recognition of the tough work that all the members of the college team have put into this budget. But we did cut about five million dollars out of the budget this year, and we've continued to see our students do very, very well, and everyone's kind of tightened up, but, you know, we've gotten to the place where we can't do more with less. And we just had to make some tough decisions this year and continue to move forward and hopefully provide the best educational experience as our students need. And then finally, I want to recognize Julie Haas and all the team who worked on Free College Day. We had thirteen hundred individuals from around our community who came in to take classes for free. Julie did a great job of coordinating that, but maybe most particularly, I'd like to recognize our faculty who came in and volunteered their time for those free classes and kind of giving the opportunity for our community to come in and actually see what a class might be in the various disciplines that were made available, kind of extra time out of their hides, and we really do appreciate our faculty stepping up and volunteering to support those thirteen hundred individuals from our community who came in for Free College Day. We actually had twenty-seven seats, or participant seats, used, so everyone, it seems, participated in two or three activities, which is really exciting, too. So, Julie, thank you, and the whole team, and particularly thanks to our faculty and counselors and all those folks who were here to support that day, and the staff members who were here. It was a great event, and thank you for your good leadership there.
Dr. Callaway, if I might interrupt. I found it very interesting. I probably had five or six people that just, in passing, thanked the college for doing that. It was a tremendous public relations, and I don't know about the other trustees, but rarely get somebody to stop and say a spontaneous comment when something went really well. It's usually a problem. But I would echo that, I guess that got my attention, that they thought that was a really, really a nice gesture.
It was a really outstanding day, and this was our second or third, second one. And so, we keep saying to Julie, this is going to be just the second annual event, and we'll have the third one and the fourth one, but it takes a lot of work, and again, it's a lot of people coming in on a Saturday on their off-hours to do something special and to help us with those kinds of information recruiting activities. With that, excuse me, I conclude my report to the board, although if you have any questions, I'd certainly be pleased to answer any of those questions you may have.
All right. Any questions, discussion? All right. Thank you, Dr. Callaway. I don't believe we have any old business to bring before the board, and I don't think we have any new business as well. So, we all move to reports from board liaisons, and begin with the Student Senate, and Mr. Paris.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to see all of you here once again. As last month, I had mentioned that the Student Senate Executive Board would participate in a pie-throwing contest during Campus Craze, and on May fourth, 2011, a day that will forever live in infamy, we delightfully greeted all members of our faculty staff and also administration with Dr. Day, and many, most importantly, our students, to throw a pie in our face for one dollar. All of the proceeds, of course, went to the family of Kyle Shutt, who lost his life in a terrible car accident a few weeks ago. And with the Help Game Interest Group, we also doubled what we had raised, and so we raised a little bit more, a little bit over two hundred dollars, and that check was signed today and also sent over to the Shutt family. And so, I'm very happy to report that the pie's not only made its mark on the Executive Board physically, but the Executive Board has a newfound appreciation for the population of cows in the United States. Last month, I also reported that the former treasurer, excuse me, the now-former treasurer, spearheaded a fundraiser to raise funds and also awareness on behalf of our Senate to aid the relief efforts for the country of Japan. Now, we did not release the amount before of how much the former treasurer and his committee made, but we can now proudly say that we raised over four hundred dollars, and that has been donated to the American Red Cross, in which they will see that it gets to where it needs to be. The Scholarship Committee, as I had also mentioned, is releasing the names today of the two recipients who would receive one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars out of the Out-of-State and International Scholarship. We congratulate Bruna Iacuzzi and Andre Patrick as they bested a crowded field of applicants to be awarded the scholarship, and we are very proud of them and all of their endeavors. A continuation of the initiatives in which we have done and started and began this year will continue next year. As far as some of our findings with the Student Senate tabling, idea in which we set up tables around campus and speak one-on-one with members of the student body, some of our findings have found that a lot of students would like for the college to lobby against the Dream Act. Also, construction, this answers Trustee Drummond's question, about special parking spots for motorcyclists so that they won't take up many of the regular parking spots, which I am in strong support of, I might say. Someone also mentioned and asked that we would ban all smoking and those who are cosmus pay a fine. And more town halls, and more importantly, more town halls with the administration and also the Board of Trustees and Dr. Callaway, in cooperation with the Student Senate would like to have been seen. There was one special one, which I thought should be brought to the attention of the board, become active to reinstate the Course Material Advisory Committee. That has been talked about time and time again, and the Old Textbook Advisory Committee. They said that the leverage of internal resources, faculty, academic, administrations, bookstore, Student Senate, that we all should get together and look at the course material options, leveraging what works best in various scenarios. So, that is what some of the student members of our student body are saying, and what they would like to see happen on campus within the next year. And as that concludes most of my report, I would personally like to take this time to thank each and every one of you to allow for me to take the chance to report to you the state of our Senate throughout the course of this year. It's meant very much to me to have received this humbling experience time and time again. As I've reported great things in the past, I look forward to reporting even greater things in the future. And in recent weeks, our Senate has been a sad farewell to the previous Executive Board, but also a very happy welcome to the new Executive Board, as they are eager to jump into new initiatives and new opportunities. I think, to sum up how I feel about the Senate in the past year, is that we have all realized that great leaders have one characteristic in common, and that is the willingness to confront equitably the major anxiety of the people that we serve and of that time. confront equitably the major anxiety of the people that we serve and of that time. And much else, not much else matters, and because of that, that is the true essence of leadership. I thank you, and I would also like to thank personally Pam Bassett for all of her hard work and her help and guidance towards the Student Senate, and Mindy Keniman in her absence, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you in the coming year. Thank you.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Paris? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the next report is on the Kansas Association for Community College Trustees, and trustee Mitchellson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. KACC will have a retreat, and we've moved the location from Fort Scott to Kansas City, Kansas. I think most everybody's aware of that. It will be on Friday, the 10th of June, and Saturday, the 11th. And on the 10th of June, there'll be an opportunity for everybody who comes to play golf at Painted Hills, and I hope a number of our trustees will take the opportunity to do that, as Dr. Sopich will attest, it's a great way to get to know everybody around the state, play golf with them, and get acquainted with what's going on at KACC. As you all know, Linda Fun's husband, Rocky, passed away from cancer sadly, and so she's returned to her executive leadership role of KACC, and she's done a tremendous job, in my opinion. I think Dr. Callaway shares that opinion, and this would be a good time to lend her some support. So those meetings are on the 10th, Friday, and on the 11th, Saturday, in Kansas City, Kansas, and that community college is undergoing a presidential search right now, and Dr. Jeff Hockaday, who helped us find Dr. Callaway, is leading that search, and I haven't had an update. Can, do you know anything as to where they stand?
I know they had 75 candidates, which is about double what they expected. They, I think they've narrowed that search to 22, just over the last day or so, and beyond that, not much, not much more.
Obviously, we have a lot of reasons to cooperate with Kansas City, Kansas, that both districts, or both community colleges fall within the 3rd congressional district, and we're represented by Representative Yoder, so there's a lot of ways we can cooperate, and if they were to get a leader who is compatible with Dr. Callaway, I think that would go a long way to making us even stronger. So I encourage everybody to show up if you can make it on the 10th and 11th.
All right.
That's that report.
And if you can continue, please, with the Johnson County Research Triangle report.
The Research Triangle, to put a date in your calendar for the next meeting, we have scheduled a meeting that will be held this time at the K-State campus. I think some of you attended the open house on the 26th of April, that was at the new K-State building for animal health and food safety, and it is indeed a beautiful building at near the intersection of K-7 and College Boulevard. The next meeting will be at 8:00 AM on the 13th of June, and then later, on the 27th of June, we have a luncheon scheduled with Dan Richardson and try to further acquaint members of Johnson County Community College with K-State. We have an ongoing excellent working relationship with the Edwards Campus and KU. We don't know the K-State administration nearly as well, and so the idea behind this lunch is to promote higher level of cooperation between our campus and this new campus, which is certainly impressive, and will contribute to workforce development, new jobs, and higher level of education, I think, in Johnson County. So that's what's going on with Jaser. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I had a quick question. Is there any update about the fire? The best building caught fire last night?
Yeah, I got an email today that was just on the roof, and that they were investigating it, but I don't know any. Have you had?
Other than what I sent you all this morning, they were able to contain it, it was contained to the roof. They haven't determined, as of last conversation or communication with Bob, they haven't determined what the cause was, but they were able to contain that, and apparently it burned for about 45 minutes. The good news is predominantly, it was the, you know, the concrete deck, but, you know, something happened to cause that to be a problem. So they did proceed on with all of their classes, as well as our classes, where we had finals today, and seemed as though everything was progressing as best as possible, but haven't heard anything else from Bob.
The best building's quite a ways away from where the classes are being offered now, and the Rainier Building and so on, so I wouldn't expect it to slow down the completion of that building.
No. Well, because it was predominantly the deck, hopefully, hopefully it was, you know, contained early enough where that wasn't a big problem.
And you saw the report from Dick Carter that we've added to the annual anticipated income in the neighborhood of 14 to 15 million, another $4,000 by virtue of the state passing the law that lets us capture the interest that we otherwise might have given to the state, so that's a big deal.
Thank you, trustee Mitchellson, and our foundation report to trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next Tuesday, May 24th, the foundation's annual luncheon will be held in the student lounge in the Commons. The focus of the luncheon will be on the people who work throughout the year contributing to the foundation's success by raising funds for student assistance and visual and performing arts. The volunteers, which are our community leaders, students, faculty, and staff, will be recognized for their contributions throughout the year, and I hope that you're planning to attend that event. And then finally, on behalf of the foundation and the college, I wanted to publicly thank Sandy Price, and I kind of wish she was here tonight, for such an outstanding job. She just finished a two-year tenure as chairman of the foundation board, and has done a fantastic job. Since 2000, Sandy has led the foundation, that's not right, since 2000, not 2000, but anyway.
2009.
Yeah. Sandy has led the foundation through the strategic planning process that will take us to the year 2015. Another area of focus for Sandy has been making sure the foundation's scholarships end up in the hands of students, which she has certainly made a huge mark. She's been a staunch supporter of improved processes within the foundation and financial aid department to make this happen, and as a result, I believe, of her leadership, financial aid has made more than $1 million in foundation scholarships available this year, and actually dispersed $875,000 of that million dollars to 794 students, more students than have ever received scholarships here, and that number, that $875,000 number, also eclipses our previous total by more than $230,000. So, you know, how many students are going, are coming here now, who might not have been able to come here, just a significant impact. And then obviously, that $230,000 just goes into the college's bottom line. So our sincere thanks to Sandy for her work, and to the entire team in financial aid and the foundation office, who've really made all of this happen for the last year, and we look toward another great year for the foundation.
Thank you. Trustee Rail, do you have a Collegial Steering Committee report?
Chair Weiss, as a matter of fact, there is no Collegial Steering Committee report. The committee did not meet today.
Then we move to the Faculty Association. Mr. Anderson?
I hope that we'll have a Collegial Steering Report next month. We'll get together and try to tie up some loose ends there in that one, so I'll try to keep my report tonight a little shorter than Mr. Carter's here, so we'll.
Thank you.
Try to work through this here, so. Tomorrow's graduation, as we all know, and so I wanted to spend a little time tonight just kind of talking about some significant points that we hit along the way this past academic year, through the Faculty Association, so. Couple of things that stood out in my mind when I was putting this list together, where we put together two joint task force to work on a couple of significant issues here. One was looking at the benefits package here, and also another one was on workload, and we did the work this year, and we achieved results, and although the workforce task force will continue on, I believe, in the coming year, there's still a lot left to do with that, and it's a fairly thorny issue, and so there's a lot of detail to work through with that one, so. But I want to thank Judy Guzzi, who co-chaired the joint task force on the benefits. I want to thank Jim McWard, who co-chaired the task force on the workload. This past year, we also saw a significant growth in our membership through the association, so I'm happy to report that, and hopefully we'll continue to see those numbers go up next year as we continue our recruiting efforts. We're in the process of working on the salary reclassification for faculty who have this MFA degree, and that's the issue. I'm hoping that we can get tied up next month at the Collegial Steering Process there, so that, I think, is an important step that we've been working on there. We've also been working on revising our bylaws as an association. They were last updated in 1999, so they were a little overdue, and so you get into those things, and it's a multi-page document, and it's pretty dry reading, and you go through it, and it was kind of a task to actually get through it and get these things updated. So I want to thank the folks who had volunteered their time to do that, because it was a kind of a labor-intensive process to really pull that together, so. But they're up for a vote right now, and I think we'll get the necessary votes to make them pass and put them in place, so. Also, we are in the process of looking at different affiliation options for our Faculty Association. Historically, we've been connected with NEA and KNEA, and we're looking at other options that are out there that we could look to tie to, and just, for example, some of them might, some of them would include the American Association of University Professors, and there's some other ones we've been looking at, too, and so we want to explore that, and if we can find ways for them to provide similar service, similar support, at a rate that's less money, and somewhat political-free, we might have even stronger membership in our organization, so that's something we'll be looking at in the coming year. Faculty evaluation has been happening this semester. There's still some details we need to get worked out with that, but I'm happy to see that's going forward, and I think we're getting pretty close to having, you know, a good product there, so. There's been numerous personnel issues this semester that I've dealt with. Some of them have been relatively unpleasant to deal with, but at the same time, they've been, they've been pretty serious. One of my, I'm disappointed with the action that really wasn't taken in the case, but that goes back to the first semester we had here, and back in the fall semester, but I'm still working through that one. We've had, the Emeritus Program has been suspended for this coming year, and I'm getting quite a bit of blowback from the Emeritus faculty on that one, and I imagine some of you guys have probably been hearing about that, too, so I'm hoping that we can work out some kind of an arrangement to get this thing back on track again and move forward with that. We also helped elect, I guess, so we can take credit for this, we helped Don, John, and Greg get elected to the Board of Trustees here recently, so that was a highlight, certainly. And then finally, I wanted to announce that we're having a party tomorrow night after graduation at the Cover Falls Clubhouse, and so I want to invite all you guys to attend. Actually, it starts at 4:00, and so if you want to.
Remind me again what time of graduation, sir.
If you want to get a head start, it starts at 4:00, but we'll have dinner there, and we'll have drinks, and traditionally, we get together before and then break, and then a lot of people will come back afterwards to celebrate and such, so again, you're all welcome to come, and I'd love to see you there, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
We're at the second petitions and communications section of the board agenda. It's a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes, unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which case the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak at the first or second petitions, but not both. Prior to the beginning of the comments, we ask that you state your name, your address, city and state, and do we have anybody at this time that would like to address the board? And seeing none, we will close that section of the agenda and move to the last item on our agenda for this evening, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is, it takes in one motion, a number of items which are considered to be routine by the board, and at this time, do we have any member of the board that would like to pull any of the consent agenda items to be considered separately? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes, and that does bring us to the end of our agenda for this evening. There will be no executive session, so we are adjourned.